Parent teacher conferences, we did the parent survey, they embedded it on the iPads. I think it worked fairly well.
It worked very well, actually. Because the nice part is that we don't calculate all of this, it doesn't write for us.
So what I did is I just went on to the website where the survey was done and typed the questions out and then did an average of what the scores were. Say that as a spreadsheet and just did an average of the scores. Those are the numbers you see over there, right? Again, the scoring was one was strongly disagreed, and two somewhat disagreeing, and then up to five was strongly agreeing. I think all the questions were written in a five would be the more positive result. The way that it worked. So I think if you go through and actually the questions, one through to thirty-one, got an average of those, four point one eight, which I think most, to me, is an indicator that people are somewhat satisfied with the school. Most of the numbers were in the fours, as you can see there. I had a couple, two or three, I think, were just under four, three point nine something. So I think those are still fairly positive in nature. We did ask, I think the board had asked about, asked questions about lengthening the school day. That was, I guess, question thirty-three. Would you be in favor of adding five days to the school year? We had fifty-two said yes, fifty-six said no. So that was pretty close, from what people thought. And then we followed, just followed that up with question thirty-four. If five days were added, would you prefer to be at the beginning, the end, or mixed? Those were, not too many people wanted them to start the year off, so we're gonna do that. So we didn't, and one of the other things we was talked about was adding a school day, but going to an eight-period day, the length of the school day's gonna have to be affected by that anyhow, because the more passing time. So we didn't, we didn't address that. But most of the other questions in here are very similar, or the same as what we did last year.
If you add more days to the year, would you still have to lengthen it, or could you pick them up by doing more?
If we were to add days, I mean, that would help with our time a little bit, with our spending instructional units and that type of thing. I guess my own personal opinion on that might, if you're going to an eight-period day, I wouldn't want to, I guess I would want to lengthen the day, because I think you end up, if it wouldn't lengthen the day and go eight periods, I'm not too sure, I'm too sure some of your classes are long enough. I have a problem with classes that are forty-some minutes long in a high school. I don't think it's really enough time to, you know, present material, give kids time to do some work in class and that kind of thing. Firstly, I prefer having fifty-two, fifty-three minutes. Fifty-four, fifty-five minutes would be good. And I know some schools go down to forty-five, I think that's really pushing it.
So you'll get better, fifteen, twenty minutes every day, to get that down?
Oh, it'll add, just on the, with the break time in between, it'll probably add twelve minutes or something like that. I would assume next year we'd be looking to start at around eight-ten and going to around three forty, maybe three thirty-six, three thirty-eight, something like that. I don't know. I think we put times on the schedule, yeah.
Yep.
Do you have an eight-period day to talk about? We have, what are you talking about?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it won't be five minutes.
I think some of that is so that they have time to use the restroom, because they're not moving as much in classes than they possibly are intended to be moving. But now, bathroom, I'm not supposed to be.
Well, we're, it would be five minutes between classes, then, or would you go with three?
Probably three, yeah.
So that's two minutes a day, and if you had twelve minutes, that's another couple of minutes, right? Well, that's, that's four minutes a class.
Then if you look at adding distance learning into it, you have to kind of look at what the classes are set up, so that our schedule kind of coincides with their times, because we don't want our kids, I mean, to leave a class eight minutes early and, and, you know. But there's, I think, four different distance learning schedules out there too, per day. With an eight-period day, if there's some people that go to three forty-five every day.
Well, you don't have to, you don't have to run through school schedule.
No, no, it doesn't have to be exact, but you don't wanna make it eight ten.
But if you start doing stuff in other schools around, you're all gonna have to be on the same peptide for it, too.
Yeah.
They'll be, they're fairly close, I think, if they're an eight-period day.
Yeah, they're great for it.
They don't differ a whole lot.
Three, what, three thirty-five is probably about the most common?
When I was at Hill, if we had a couple of classes, we took over satellite and they started on the hour. So we really had to adjust either the start or the end of classes, or just allow kids to leave early, or come classes late. It worked, I mean, you just gotta work together with the schools, it was very good. Okay, any specific questions or comments on this survey?
It looks to me like it's pretty good.
So, if this was the same as last, did you notice anything change around here, from what?
I didn't, not anything significant.
You mean our principal didn't improve?
I don't know that there were any changes.
I see the communication's good for, it's easy to talk to school administrators, I like that.
It's 'cause I can talk to everyone.
Close to the highest score.
Well, when they add anything about this, you can have two or three parents that give you a D.
You know, we had-
I have two or three that give you an A, and you don't find those low ones.
We had some that didn't. Gave us, and it was kind of across the board. Did you guys look at that survey yet? You know, we pointed it out, that there was two people that constantly gave us a negative rating on that.
Your three and five were real high, too, so I guess I've-
I was, I was okay with it, you know, when you look at, like, this three-nine-seven, the teachers keep me informed of how my child is doing. That's kind of a tough one, because all they have to do is log on to Power School. You know, the days of us having to get on the phone and calling constantly, log on to Power School, it's right there. You know, they, they know.
And I thought that one was interesting, because I was talking to somebody, it wasn't even from this district about that, though, that, you know, the communication thing and having, having that information available on Power School, and they were really quite negative about having a system like that. They didn't, didn't like that necessarily. So I thought that was kind of interesting, because, you know, that person would have, would have rated that answer very low. To me, just having that available is a very positive thing. They wanted, you know, that touchy type thing.
Personal contact.
Whereas the personal contact, I, they thought was important.
And I think, as a faculty and as administrator, it's very easy to say, all you have to do is log on to Power School. I mean, everything is on the website, it's all right there, you have access to it with a click of a mouse and-
It makes you feel like, you always, I always wanted to talk to the teacher, what did they do in writing, what did they do in writing?
Absolutely. Oh, yeah. And, and I think, you know, I do know that they're having meetings with parents, and I know they're doing those things, because I sit in there with them, and, and they are having those meetings, but, like I said, you know, one person, two people gave us pretty much zeros on everything.
Well, and that's reflected where you look at the grades, A, B, C, D, F.
Do you have that, do you have the other one from the year before?
I, I forgot it, I can show it to you sometime.
I'm interested in the changes.
Yeah.
You know, I think that our attitude, our positive attitude in the school, I think, is much higher than what it was before.
Well, you look at number twelve, my child enjoys going to school, four point three-nine. Yeah, that's good. I mean, I've always felt that, but I have heard some people, my kid don't wanna go to school, though.
My kid doesn't either, he doesn't have a choice.
Yeah, well, you're not gonna get a hundred percent, because some kids aren't gonna. But when you're at four point three-nine, that's pretty, I mean, so.
So are these exact same questions as last year? I mean, can you compare?
They're, yeah, they're pretty much the same. We, we did eliminate some of the questions on last year, because I think four or six of the questions dealt with, um-
Eight-period day.
The eight-period day, that, you know, making that transition. So we just took those, you know, off.
I don't know, I, I think most of our kids are pretty happy in the hallways. I mean, you walk through the halls and they will speak to you, and they will come and let you know if they see somebody in the building that's there and help cheer them and, you know, and I think that's-
So they need less parent-teacher contact, because they can't go on the computer, they don't have to, does the teacher like stuff here?
I think, yeah. And I agree, I kind of agree with Mr. Green, I'd say it's still nice to talk to a new teacher. And, and they do some notes on, I'll put in there, you know, if a kid is constantly in, like, being at church or school, maybe send a note home, have contact. And I do know that I P, they, they carve me on all their emails, too. And so, there's a lot of email conversations going on, too.
A lot of them, I know teachers call people, something really good or something really bad, and they call it right away, because a lot of them, I think, get to me, too.
Moving on to the action items. Approve on first and second reading changes to board policy four oh two point five, well, employee income protections.
When I was taking my administrative class, they said policy should be short and to the point. This one meets that requirement, it's pretty short and to the point, but I think it says what it needs to say, that employees can purchase their own disability insurance and through the provider the school district uses, and they'll use them like the payable deductions. And, and the reason we, we do that is for the employee, if, if they purchase that, if they're, if they end up collecting on that disability insurance and they have paid the premium, then there's no taxes. Or if the district has paid the premium, then there would be taxes on it. So it's really a benefit to the employee to do that. I'll move to approve our first-
Second reading changes to policy, board policy four oh two point five, employee income protection.
I'll second that. It's been moved in second. Roll call. Bob?
Yes.
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Next item is approve on first and second reading changes to board policy four oh two point oh nine, recognition for service of employees and others.
This is the policy that was reviewed and comments about the, we did, it, it didn't deal with the staff members that were, what was it, over twenty years, I think, what we would do with them. So we just added step number four in there, which, I think, three deals with the twenty years, and then step four would be at twenty, basically, every five years after that, there would be, they received one day of additional pay personally.
I'll make a motion to approve our first and second reading changes to board policy four oh two oh nine, recognition for service of employees and others.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second, and roll call. Vicky?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Next item is to approve the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen audit.
I was actually kind of surprised, we had this first board meeting, when was he out? Two, two weeks ago, three weeks ago? I was real surprised when he dropped this off last, a week ago, Friday, I think it was, and we got it back, I think, because I don't think he's even, I don't think he's even been out to some of the schools yet. Because I know when he brought it that day, he was headed to one place where he had a few issues to take care of, so. But anyhow, as I mentioned earlier, Mike is really good to work with, I think I am too, and I both enjoy working with him. He comes out kind of ahead of time, the day or whatever, gathers some information, and I think this year he left by, I don't know, wasn't here till probably eight-thirty and left. I was gone, I guess, about two-thirty, two o'clock. So he really gets the information put together in a hurry, and is always good about answering questions, or if we've, you know, if we've got, you know, wanna know something about maybe how we should be coding something or improving things, he does, he does a really good job with that. And I also wanna mention that, I think, whenever, you know, whenever I talk to him about coming, I think he likes coming to Plainview, because things are in order, and that's a compliment I can, he always has things laid out, and easy to find, so. Any questions on that? I know you've all read it word by word.
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twelve thirteen audit report.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second to approve the two thousand twelve thirteen audit report. Roll call. Myself, yes. Vicky?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bob?
Thank you, because actually I submitted it to State today, so.
You're running out of mail, Charlie.
I think I and Jane and Mike Tom, that was the same here, so if he didn't find anything, we're probably not gonna find anything either, so we went ahead and submitted it.
Next item to discuss and act on is changing graduation requirements to include economics.
I suppose this is no Vicky's.
I've had the pleasure of going to three departments every week, and we have another one coming up. Graduation, and that's Cory is here, so he's gonna get it again. Being a social science teacher in the upper elementary, economics has become a huge part of the standards. We actually need to offer an economics class. I realize social studies is not tested yet, but if they throw a test out, it's, we won't need to go to any departments either. So I think we can do this, and I, and I have been working on the schedule, and I think the schedule is pretty complete for next year already, minus throwing in the elementary specials and those kinds of things. It's fairly complete for the secondary. We could, and this is, if, this is how you agree to, it only needs to be a semester class. I was starting with Mr. Genata about geography, so that we could put the geography at five credits, economics five credits, and then still make up their forty credits. So we're not really changing the number of credits that they need, thought, and then that could go opposite the speech nine class, which works really well, because there will be enough to split them in half still. And it'll be two sections of the speech nine, and so if you're not in the one section, you'll be in the oral geography section. And then by the time they're juniors, then basically they'll get another required class that they have to take, that has to be in the social science department. Because that's what they say economics should be.
So what's geography's going from a year, like, a year class to-
To a semester. Mm-hmm. But we added world history back in there, because those two things were actually combined into one class, which was virtually impossible to do. And so that's still, I mean, technically, our kids could get sixty hours, because current issues, there's room in the schedule, but current issues back in there could go back into the eight-period day. So they could get about sixty, so for sentence credits, if they wanted to take elective and those kinds of things. So, I mean, basically, all the changes is it moves geography to five, add economics as five, and they're still at their forty required that they have to have.
So Genata would be teaching it?
Mr. Schumacher would be, Mr. Genata's schedule is full.
And it would be, what's the curriculum? It's, you have to find a curriculum for it? I mean, we have to buy books?
We would have to buy books.
Materials?
Mm-hmm.
So it's gonna be developed yet?
The class, yeah, whoever teaches it will have to develop the class. I mean, basically, the standards are your curriculum.
Right.
I mean, they tell you this is what they have to know, so I'm not sure why we would spend hours upon hours rewriting something that they're already telling us. It used to be example indicators, is that what they were called? And they're no longer example indicators, this is what you need to know. And most of the social sciences, they started with, when it started, it was a hundred and ninety-one, and then they dropped it to a hundred and forty-four, and then I think it went to ninety-two. And when they went from that big number to the ninety-two, it became very generic. Something like, students will be able to distinguish between cooperation and conflict. Well, that could be anything from the beginning of time to, you know, what we're doing right now in Afghanistan. So you don't, I mean, that wasn't, seemed to me to be a bit generic. I never really agree with the social studies standards, but I'm unimportant, we'll have to be part of that, so. But that, we, we do need to make that change. And, um, Mr. Genata teaches geography.
That would start next year, you're saying, then?
Yeah.
So-
And those juniors would have to have it.
I was gonna say, then?
Because it is in the standards.
And next year's seniors wouldn't have to?
Nope, because they don't test on that, NISA testing.
Oh, okay.
Wish I'd figured that out, didn't you?
So if we stayed for a period day, it'd be really tough to get that in there.
Uh, yes, it would. And I'm not teaching economics. Pick up something else that's not economics.
Is geography a year class now?
It is, but I talked to Mr. Genata, and I know a lot of schools have gone to putting it at five, and it is possible. Of the, of all of the classes, geography is probably the easiest to make go to five. And it works really well, putting it opposite of that speech class, then, because I think world history becomes more difficult, too. There's a lot of stuff out there for a teacher.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve adding economics to graduation requirements.
I'll second.
President, please send it.
Okay, it's been moved in second to add economics to next year's schedule, graduation requirements, roll call. Vicky?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes.
Alden?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Next item is discuss and act on joining the Nebraska Whole Child Project.
I hope that you read through this information, and you tell me exactly what it says.
I did, and I, I think it's due to student, yeah.
What it says. Did you read it, Marilyn?
Well, it's a scam.
Basically, it's about forming the, the agreement, and then forming the, I'm gonna say-
It's something Mr. Green, well, he's been in there.
The bylaws for, it's what it is, it doesn't say, it's a whole lot. I did call Mike Delaney from the School Administrative Association, just asked, I said, I don't really, I mean, I didn't see what, what was in it. And, and what he said's kind of what I said there, they, they want to have a little bit of, I think, teeth, and maybe pursuing this, and hopefully getting maybe some funding, and getting some emphasis on maybe some studies to push a little bit, to show that, you know, there is connection between a student obesity and how they do academically. And that's really what they're trying, I think, gather, not only gather the information, but hopefully get, have, have an organization or a group to, to maybe head that up, where they will be able to maybe push a little bit, whether it's through legislation or through funding, to be able to do that, so.
But are they wanting, if we get info, so they can require us to do, say, one donation for each participant, is what it says?
I don't know, donation, because what he told me is there's really no, there'll be no financial obligations on it, he told me.
Yeah, just-
Fair. I don't know.
It's right in somewhere.
It's fine, you're fighting for your four.
Yeah, it's, it's about the bodies, yeah. And how it's doing school.
So soliciting donations for participating foundations.
I think they're gonna try to find groups or organizations that will, you know, help fund, is what it is. I don't think this was for that.
Well, the mail looks like maybe it's something that might be better or different than what you say, starting our kids, and thinking, just because they don't feed them, they're not gonna be obese, that there's more to it than just that. And maybe this will get, bring something else up that'll help, I don't know.
As I indicated, there it is sponsored by both, you know, the administrative group and by the School Boards Association. And this was really, and I'll be honest with you, this is the first I, I heard about when I got the, got the information on it, isn't something that they've got a lot of, you know, things out here and said about it, so. And that's why I called, I called Mr. Delaney and asked him.
So it's a kind of much more stupid rules that don't really get-
Yeah, and he means it's a question.
Yeah.
Well, this is a, they're basically like a corporation, you read it.
Oh, I know, yeah.
It's just corporate, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it is, organization.
Oh, I disagree with them. What's that gonna do, they don't tell you who's gonna be on it?
I just don't want to be a lot of paper, right, stuff to set up.
It's just all legal.
Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Can we get out, is this gonna be a yearly thing that we apply for, or once you're in here and-
I think the first one, you're in there for two years, and then you automatically leave for two years.
Yeah.
I just read something you can apply every time.
You're gonna fund it, boy.
Yeah, if they're gonna solicit funds and, you know, come up with projects, they get, which, I don't know.
Page two.
It says for a two-year, two-year period.
I'm guessing we'll always get in if they think so.
What'd you say, Marilyn?
I guess if you don't have a motion, it'll die, so.
Well, the thing is, is they don't need all the school support too long, but they can go ahead and set it up, and start their study. I mean, we aren't gonna give them information anyway, are we?
I'm sure whether, whether we're a member or not, we'll be required to give them information if they decide they, they want information, or we will be asked to provide information, I'll put it that way.
Okay, there are no motion?
That would be a, I don't think, for a motion.
Okay, we'll move down to the reports. Mr. Frederick, do you have something?
Parents, everything, this is my written report, other than we changed, gym football to tomorrow night at six o'clock, being last Monday, and tonight's junior high football goes to Thursday at four o'clock here. And we did that through the weather, through the water standard down there.
I have a question, that may be, I don't know if you're the guy to go to or not, but we never get any results of volleyball games in the papers, there's no stats or anything?
We are working on that.
I got my first one this week, so-
I noticed it was in the Norfolk paper, the last one, that's the first one I've seen in I don't know how many years for volleyball.
Hey, you did in there last year.
One, yeah.
You did last year?
Yeah.
Well, there's been, in the past, it hasn't always been in, I know.
It's something we're working on, trying to resolve right now.
Okay. Because I just say, I mean, even if they aren't winning, if there's a player or two that have a good game, and you see that and read it, you can encourage that player, which gives them some benefit. But if you don't know how anybody did and they lose, who, I mean, how are you gonna encourage anybody?
Makes Grandma and Grandpa's happy, too.
Yeah, I agree.
Because then I don't care about it. So we're working on trying to resolve it.
Okay.
Speaking of Grandma and Grandpas, this one comes back to you, I heard, the railings in, where are we at, or?
They are, the ones for the gym?
Yeah.
They are ordered.
Okay.
I don't know when they will be here, but they are ordered.
Am I gonna make a phone call on that?
Yeah.
Would you like to have them basketball?
You know, after we talked to him last time, he did call me, and I okayed it.
So I'll talk to him, so we sure like to have him at basketball, so.
Okay, my next question, the football, we, we started talking about that. I heard a comment from it, I just wanna verify. We can still opt to stay eight-man, even though we may qualify, or, this student tried to tell me that we didn't have that option.
No, we can opt eight-man, but again, it'll be the same thing, we're sitting there right now, there would be no state playoffs or-
Is every game a forfeit? I mean, are we, if I lost, win or lose? Is every game a forfeit, although even if you win, it's considered a loss?
No, just done.
You just, you just don't have playoffs.
Fighting off the team that got beat, you know, you could ruin their-
I didn't know if the team that got beat, you know, you could ruin their season by taking that loss to a bigger school.
And it's still, it's all based on the power points and.
It would simply help out a school, we're, we go into the point system no matter what, I'm assuming? But if somebody else may make the playoffs, if we actually qualified up there higher, and I look, saying that right? Because we're not eligible. So there could be somebody with a lower point rating than us, makes the playoffs.
Right.
We can't get in there.
Well, then it's based on like division one, two, three, four, goes by class, and so, I'm sure people ask, you don't put anything, and, um, if you're a person, and I'm not just saying claim to anybody that opts to be a senior, there should be a one in there.
Because we'll have, when do we have to, I mean, obviously, this is the second year, when do we have to make that decision?
Co-op's have to be in by the first of November, and we have to make a declaration by the end of November.
So that, yeah, that's next.
Well, we'd have to do that on a bond. Well, for football, we have to do it by the first of November this year.
First of November is if you're in co-op.
You're in co-op.
The thirtieth, I believe, is. You're declaring if you're gonna go eleven man, six man, eight man.
Co-op has it on the agenda next meeting then, or?
At the November meeting, Mr. Frederick, then?
Yeah, because it's new, the thirtieth of November.
I mean, the coaches obviously got their info, but we'll, I guess, yeah, we'll need to make that.
Well, I'll probably have, ask the football coaches to come.
Yeah, because otherwise, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming they're thinking we will, but otherwise, yeah. The field's not a big issue, but if we did go back, but.
Yeah, if it's on the agenda, then if you get concerned parents, they can show up.
Yeah, well.
I, I know which way the football coaches are leaning, because I talked to them, I'll let them give all that expression.
Okay, well, we should just make sure it's somewhat publicized again, I mean, I don't think there'll be any debate on it, but, um.
Yeah, no.
Can a, can a school, if they're eight man, can they opt to play eleven man?
I saw that in the paper the other day.
They can, or can't?
Can't.
They can't?
There was a gr, a ruling in two thousand seven, that the paper quoted, that said that you can go down, but you can't go up.
You can't go up.
Because that's some little plan, or, they said, the ma, the rules made about A and B schools, who they didn't want. If they dropped to B, they didn't want them to opt up into A. Screw it up all their.
See, I just read an article, and I think they said if you, I thought it said you could opt up, but you had to opt up in everything. You couldn't just do it like for volleyball, you couldn't do it just for football, I thought is what they said.
You couldn't pick your sports to opt.
Yeah, sure.
You could opt up into A, because he echoes my school, so.
And see, and I, and I think there's, I think they've done that, like, in the metro area, I think some of the schools have opted up to stay class A. And I, there just an article in the paper, it was the last week, but, but, uh, was it Benson might be going down to B? I think it was Benson, okay, he's going down to B.
Ben Bunny, yeah.
But they would end up, and what I understand now, it would be they would have to go, if they're gonna opt up, they go up in everything.
Well, the reason they might not want to, because if they just go to, they're A now and they're going to B, I mean, literally, their state, their travel, I mean.
But why would you wanna opt up to class?
So that they keep their schedule in Omaha, like, you know, which is a lot of B schools.
And I think there, there was a time Columbus, I don't, is Columbus playing B now?
Yes.
I believe.
No.
No, it's still one.
No, Columbus is B.
I think they're B, there, I think there was a time they wanted to stay A, so they opted up. But I think they have gone down to B now.
See, in Omaha, school travel time, if they ended up out of McCook or Scotts Bluff or, I don't know, I hope these are like that.
No, necessarily, there's more A schools and B schools.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying, they, they're, anyway. Well, anyway, I just wanted to clear up a couple of comments, and obviously, make sure we're publicized and where we wanna be, because it, the problem is your, your option for two years, well, actually. I mean, it's gonna be the coach's decision, I think, but, I mean, in another year, say we are more productive, and we have, can make the playoffs, they, you know, we, they gotta understand they can't do it. I mean, this year sophomores.
They're still playing with a lot of the youngsters.
But what do you do if you?
I'm still saying your sophomores.
So this would be.
Your sophomores will never be able to be in the playoff.
My son would be a sa, a junior before he could ever qualify for playoffs.
So this year's freshman, it'll be senior.
What do they do if you co-op in that second year? Do they change stuff then? So like if next year we would co-op with another school in football, or not next year, the year after?
We can't, I think we gotta wait till the next.
You have to wait till.
If I'm reading it wrong.
Or you drop your program.
What's that?
Or you drop your program.
Yeah.
Was there five that did it this year, at the beginning of the year?
They're simply a whole new.
They said we're not playing, we don't have enough for football, we're not growing. Same as one, we don't have enough, there's no football. Uh, Newcastle, they were the other one, they're playing just a JV schedule with whoever wants to play. There you go.
Well, you know, I, I mean, I'm just thinking that through, just so that they're aware that this year's sophomores would never be able to play a playoff game. As seniors, they.
The coaches are very aware of all that.
Okay.
Because we've had many discussions, so.
Yeah, well.
But I'd rather have them come talk to you.
Sure.
Instead of me trying to talk for them.
And I'm just bringing it up here in this public meeting right now.
No.
Is that because we have enough for eleven, but we opt to play eight?
That's what we've done, this, this.
Our school size.
Yeah.
Says we should play eleven.
Our school says, says we should play eleven, but we're opting to play eight.
And you look at our enrollment, we'll actually have the potential maybe to go up a few kids in, in, in participation.
Sure.
And those kids, I mean, you can even say the freshmen, I mean, I, I've just, as juniors, they still wouldn't be eligible for playoffs. I mean, you already had it.
Well, one thing is taking a look at too, is what are the teams that you're probably gonna play doing, are they dropping in size and quality, I mean, do you have a chance to play or compete with those teams?
Yeah, it's up to the coach versus, you know, the way it's been. And I'm just.
You gotta look at that too, if they have a chance to win, or, you know.
It'll be a tough decision for those kids, because, I mean, it'll be, it'll be a tough, if, if, if they qualify for the playoffs in a couple of years, and you're gonna have to say, sorry. You could be six and two, and you got a shot at playing two or three lines down.
I'll tell you some of the things they're looking at are player numbers, player size.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it, it sounds odd, but.
Yeah.
We're not sitting there with two, three hundred pound kids.
No, I, I.
But you gotta compare that with the teams you're gonna be playing too, and see if you're comparable in those categories with other schools, more comparable in the next two years than what you were this two years.
Well, you got a junior high team that's had best record, and, and those kids as sophomores.
But we've been there before, with really good junior high teams.
And we've usually gone through and, and done very well. Now, the cycle's been.
Those sophomores, I mean, they'll be juniors by the time they play, like, playoffs.
But we've had some very successful sophomore squads, sophomore, I mean, because you, you put the combination together, and, and we've had some very good sophomore, junior. I mean, you look around, a lot of the eight man, they're, they got a good freshman core that comes in, and that promotes them. I'm not trying to, I, I just want so, I just want the kids to recognize, if, if they make that decision, and the sad part, yeah, if you go up to eleven man, maybe they, they get them.
Well, if we were, if we would've gone eleven man this year, there were times when you would've had to cancel games, and you wouldn't have enough.
There, there's no debate now, I'm just, I just know there's a little bit of a, a number deal there.
Well, there's a, there's a ten freshman now, and we got twenty-two outs left to follow on all the other classes, what, two seniors? So that's ten between the other two.
There's quite a few of eighth yearers.
Yeah, well, I'm talking about the jun, junior and sophomore classes will be ten now. So that's the next two years, you're only gonna have maybe five seniors, so you're.
Well, the coaches are bringing some numbers, I, I just, I just want the discussion, because we're locked into the two-year part of it, that's, I'd be frustrated as, as a, as a sophomore on the team to recognize that I'd never.